The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Page. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Cone. Alderman Grass. Seventeen present.
A coram being present, we will be led in prayer by Pastor James E. Holloway Jr. from Solomon's Temple Church.
To the Aldermen, to all you all are here, thank you for having me and thank you before I pray for your service to our communities. I believe that our highest value is the value that we bring to others. And Jesus said something, He said, "Love others as I have loved you." Let's pray, inspire our heads. Father, thank you for this day, thank you for this time, thank you for life, thank you for health, we thank you for strength, we thank you for your kindness and your divine love. We pray for wisdom, we pray for divine guidance, we pray for spiritual assistance, we pray for peace and hope and love over our nation, over our country, over our city, over our communities, and we pray for unity, unity throughout this land. And we pray for everybody's family that's here represented, whether the need is physical, spiritual, financial, mental, emotional. God, we thank you for meeting every need. God, thank you for strengthening us. God, may we continue to come together in love, may we continue to come together in understanding, reveal truth to us and reveal knowledge to us and the way that we should go. We give you glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
We will dispense with line item three, any introduction of honored guests. Aldermen from the twenty-third.
Always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer, who's not here with me today, he's homesick, but I'd like to have him as my special guest today.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board. In honor of Black History Month and as the Chair of the African-American Automatic Caucus, I would like to recognize Hudson Embassy at 3818 Page Boulevard, and they have been in business for over sixty years, and they're a record shop. And so I don't think people this day and age recognizes that record shops and people are coming back to the LPs and the, what is it, record players. And so I was really honored when I met Mr. Hudson because I told him it was unique because I didn't even know that we still had record shops in our city. So I would like us to recognize Hudson Embassy.
Alderwoman from the second.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to recognize and have as my special guest My Mother's Roots Daycare Center located at 8231 North Broadway in the Second Ward currently, and they are doing phenomenal things with children at the daycare center, so thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourth.
Wait a minute. Alrighty. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to acknowledge JoJo's Restaurant that's on Martin Luther King and Whittier. Stop by, he can use your business, and the food is excellent.
Alderwoman from the twenty-first.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I would like to acknowledge and thank the owner of Angels Within, who is also doing a tremendous development project between Alice and Adelaide, Ms. Karen Greer, who is the owner and proprietor and developer of that establishment. So we'd like to thank her for that. But additionally, if I can just take a moment to acknowledge that, you know, this being our last day and so many of us have been here, well, many of you have been here for a long time, I just got here in August, but I do want to thank everyone for their warm reception, and I thank you all for sharing your knowledge and your wisdom and sometimes your grace and your mercy on this floor where we have sometimes had conflict, but we've also had times where there was, you know, compromise. There's been progress, and all of this is done in the name of the great people of our city of St. Louis. And so for that, I would just like to thank all of my peers here today and wish God's speed to those of us who will not be back. I'm claiming in the mighty name of Jesus, I will be here, so you will have to deal with me again, amen.
Any further introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from the eighteenth.
Since this is Black History Month and I'm gonna stay on topic, and I don't want anybody to say I'm out of order, but since I know that this body and all the way from Africa to how we got over here, we've been, our experience has been different. And so I'm gonna take a few minutes to show you the differences in our experience since we've been here. One, we were called property, we were slaves, and we worked for almost three hundred years, for more than three hundred years, and forced, for free. And so we've contributed more labor to this country than anybody else in this country for free, but we've been treated worse than anybody else. And I'm not exaggerating, let me quickly go through something. After getting out of slavery, we had to have a civil rights bill, especially for us, in seventeen, in eighteen seventy-five, it was rescinded in eighteen, eighty-three, then in eighteen, eight, so we were segregated. Then in eighteen ninety-six, it made, the government itself made it legal to segregate us for more than sixty years, just us, the people who had worked for free to clear the land from the Atlantic Ocean to the Pacific Ocean. Then we had to have another law, Brown versus Board of Education, to be able to use public facilities, then another law in eighteen sixty-four, the Voting Rights Act, when the Constitution clearly said in eighteen sixty-five, sixty-six, that all men in America could vote, everybody, but we couldn't. Then, then in eighteen nineteen, about nineteen nineteen, all women were supposed to vote, but black people couldn't vote. Okay, but businesses, I'm gonna get to the businesses, as to why we don't have big businesses in our community. And so we've been discriminated against, and I'm gonna talk about the business, but I have to give some background. So then, so when I get to the businesses in our community, I have a business on Martin Luther King called Metric Cleaners. That business has been there, good business, I want people to shop there. It's on, I think it's Marcus and Dr. King, but houses around that business have been torn down, so the prices have to go up or they have to go out of business. That's just it, so, so the point is, we would have more businesses if we had have gotten reparations for the labor we provided, if we had have, had not torn down all those houses in North St. Louis that could have been saved, we would have had more businesses. So the point is, even though I have a business in my ward that I'm asking you to shop in, and not in my ward, in the Eighteenth Ward, it belongs to the residents. So I made a mistake and I misspoke, but the point is, this is Black History Month, and the reason we had to celebrate it is because we were left out of history by the white printers and publishers, and that need to be known, and I'm unapologetic. Why should I apologize and not take up time when my ancestors took, were forced to work for three hundred years, another hundred years, being treated differently, still being treated different, right today? And I can say, and I'm gonna stop after this, today, in St. Louis, the headquarters of, we were raided at gunpoint, the headquarters, only because we were having businesses and trying to do for self, were not allowed, were mistreated because we are black. That's the only reason, and we are constantly being mistreated, and so I thanked you and I year back, but I'm, I'm taking this time because we haven't been given this time at the City Hall in the past, and so I deserve the time, and I should be able to take all day, but thank you, I won't do that because I respect everybody.
Aldermen from the ninth.
Thank you, Madam President. Going along with the theme of Black History Month, I would also like to recognize as a special guest Shondra Davis, who is the owner of Lefty's Fried Rice in beautiful Benton Park at 3,000 South Jefferson, and they are known as the first one-hundred percent black-owned rice house in the state of Missouri. So everyone go out and support Lefty's Fried Rice and support my good friend Shondra Davis. But then I would also like to recognize my constituent Danielle Bradley and Alejandro Santiago from, well, from Alderwoman Annie Rice's ward, and Danielle Bradley from the wonderful Ninth Ward, from Cori Bush's, our Congresswoman Cori Bush's office, and they wanted me to remind everyone that your Congresswoman loves you, so, thank you.
Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to also add Alejandro as my special guest as one of our newest U.S. citizens, so thank you so much, and congratulations. And to recognize a couple of black-owned businesses in the Eighth Ward, as always, Sweet Art and Rain is continuing to operate Sweet Art, she was gonna maybe take a break for a little bit, but she is continuing, so if you have not gotten the best vegan soul food in town or comfort food, I think maybe is more, more correct, please come on down to the Shaw neighborhood and get some Sweet Art, thank you.
Alderwoman from the seventeenth.
Good morning, good morning. I would like to recognize Creole with a splash of soul, Rhonda Walker is the owner, and she started it during the pandemic, and she struggled a lot, and I am so happy that she is still open. On Sundays, the line is around the block, it's about a forty-five minute wait, so be patient, but the food is wonderful, and it's a brand-new black business in Forest Park Southeast, so Rhonda Walker, congratulations.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Before I announce my business, I would like to have as my special guest Commissioner Brumman from the Division of Civilian Oversight, the Civilian Oversight Board, and our very own living legend, Black History, Black woman in the city of St. Louis attorney Ruby Bonner from the Division of Civilian Oversight here in the city of St. Louis. Thank you all for being here. And for my black business, I would like to announce Dr. Marcus Howard. Dr. Marcus Howard is a young African-American male with the first black-owned pharmacy here in the Twenty-Sixth Ward, it's called Greater Health Pharmacy Wellness, it's in the amazing Delmar Divine Division that Maxine Clark had and has implemented, and it's at 5503 Delmar Boulevard, Suite B. The grand opening is on February the twenty-eighth, but he is open now. You can transfer your prescriptions to Greater Health Pharmacy and Wellness now. He delivers, he's doing an amazing job, he has some holistic ideas too about pharmacy in our community, so shout out to you, Dr. Howard, I'll see you on the twenty-eighth if not before.
Aldermen from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to give a shout out to Alibi Cookies in Dogtown, Mike Evans owns it, it's a black-owned business. It has been an interesting addition to the neighbor, excuse me, to the neighborhood because they have a cookie bot outside, which is twenty-four-seven, you can get hot cookies. So if you're having a midnight craving, you can go down to Alibi and get warm chocolate-chip cookies anytime of the day or night. So yeah, I just want to give a shout out to Mike Evans and Alibi Cookies, thanks.
Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. In honor of Black History, I'd like to give a shout out to Button &amp; Bowles Preschool, who has been in the Twenty-Second Ward for forty-nine years, they're located at 2819 Union, and they do six weeks to twelve-year-old children, and they do before and after-school programs as well, so thank you.
Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to recognize The Hop Shop at the corner of Cherokee and Jefferson, it is a black-owned specialty beer shop, specialty beer and spirits. Brothers Brian and Justin started that in an old, was a former predatory business, a rent-a-center, and they've turned that spot into just a fabulous community gathering spot and a place where you can try local spirits and local beers, and it's really a fabulous tasting spot. And if last week's meeting is any indication about how today will go, I'll see you all there after the meeting.
Any further introduction of honored guests, any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Does this work? Good.
Special order, okay. We are, with no other introduction of honored guests, we will go back to line item three and take up the special order of the day.
I got one.
Oh, you have an introduction, okay.
Yeah.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Board. I'd like to recognize Latte Coffee Shop and Eatery. This is a family-owned business, they have one in Florence, Missouri, they recently, in the middle of COVID, opened a facility on, at 2617 Washington Avenue, right at Jefferson. What I like about it is, they are able to function as a family, run two businesses, have a lot of aspirations for expanding, and also knowing and understanding what community means. So they hire from the local colleges around, they make sure that people are trained well. As you all may know, if you drive by there or you have been there, the line is normally outside down around the corner. People come from all over the metropolitan area to eat the good food, get the great lattes with every flavor you can think of, and to Karen, who is the mama bear of the family, go, girl, I appreciate you.
Any further introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from the fourth.
Yes, I wanted to acknowledge as my honored guest today Barbara Martin. She is also my sorority sister, and I'm just elated to see her here today, thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the Board, I'd also like to introduce as my honored guest Barbara Martin, who I have represented for thirty years now. She lives in the old Twentieth, the real Twentieth, the current First, soon to be the Twelfth. We got a lot of different numbers that go behind us, and we still live in the same house at all these times. I also would like to introduce as my honored guest the strip of Natural Bridge between Marcus and Union. What people don't know is most of the businesses there are black-owned. We have Stephanie Brothers Auto Body and Detailing. Mr. Stephanie is a very, very good auto repair person and a good businessman, keeps his businesses immaculate. If you go to the Burger King, that's right down the street from that, that is black-owned. There's a Flores up there that is black-owned. The gas station at Kings Highway and Natural Bridge, which I encourage everybody who lives in North St. Louis to go to, actually it's owned by somebody black. The strip mall that is on, between Geraldine and Norwood, black-built and black-owned. We also have Wade's Funeral Home, black-owned, we have a used, we have a used, not appliance, but furniture and miscellaneous items, black-owned. So we have a long-term list of black-owned businesses in our community that people take for granted and don't know that they are black, oh, and the McDonald's, I'm sorry, and the McDonald's, if you go to Natural Bridge and Kings Highway, is black-owned. So I want all those black owners to be my guests because as I've built big things in my community, I've also tried to work very hard to also support black businesses. You don't grow if you don't teach, each one, reach one and teach one. The strip mall, I used to have my, I had that built back in the nineties, I had my office in it, and former state senator Jamila Nasheed, that's how I first met her because she called me to ask me about coming to the strip mall, and so she had her office next to me, had Mama Jammas in there, had Fayrose Donuts started there, so you can start on Natural Bridge and then you can really soar. So we just had a call from a well-known black business that was in the Nineteenth Ward that's now coming to either Natural Bridge or Martin Luther King in the new Twelfth Ward, so come and do business with us, we're open for business. And thank you for all of those who are already operating not only wonderful businesses, but also financially sound and a good place to go and do your business. Come to Natural Bridge and do your business, thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Aldermen from the twenty-fourth, twenty-third, sorry.
You got it, twenty-third. Yeah, I'd like to move the, for the approval, the minutes.
Oh, we're, we're gonna actually go back to the special order of the business.
Oh, okay.
Special order of the day now that the Alderwoman from the nineteenth is here. So with that, we will dispense with the regular order of business to take up the special order of the day. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on the introduction of Courtesy Resolution 189.
Madam President, members of the Board, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent.
We first have to suspend the rules since it wasn't introduced.
Let's move to suspend the rules.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Courtesy Resolution 189. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you are now recognized on the special order of the day.
Thank you very much. Resolution number 189 deserves really no introduction because it has been in the history of the city of St. Louis for over seventy-five years, based on the movements and decisions that were made, some of them supported by law, some of them supported by, that's just what we want to do, and it was, it was an atrocity against a community of Native American, because a lot of people don't know there was a lot of Native Americans that lived in that area too, but most especially African-Americans, to relocate them, dislocate them at will. These were people who not only had homes, they had businesses, they had relationships, their schools were well taken care of, they took care of their children, and you didn't have a lot of crime there. That was another thing that we couldn't understand about that era. But we have a committee of people who have chosen to be determined, for that area to be recognized and the history be told in the truest form possible. And for those of you who are present from the Mill Creek Valley Committee, I see Judith Arnold standing over here, Ruby Bonner, I think you're here, you're here, Barbara Martin, I see you're here, is there anybody else here that I missed, I know Vivian Gibson was supposed to come over, but there's a long list of people who we will be recognizing as we move forward. Giving the knowledge and the history of this, we know that we are beginning to acknowledge our wrong, and I want to give recognition to the St. Louis Soccer Park because they are providing a monument to honor it on Market Street. I want to also honor Harri Stowe because they're also recognizing what happened, and they're gonna have a monument on Market Street. I want to also recognize the Great River Greenway because they are looking at and applying recognition to this atrocity, and others will do the same. But what we want to do is make sure that the actual identification is noted for history, and we want to make sure that the history is told at any time, in any place, that it is available to us. We must know our history so that we won't make that mistake again. I asked for you, I'm hoping that you had a chance to read the resolution, and just for the sake of the record, because this is so important, Madam President, can it be read into the record, please?
Yes, Madam Clerk, if you would please read Resolution 189 into the record.
Whereas the members of the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen hold in high esteem those neighborhoods that have contributed greatly to the history and culture of this city, and whereas the Mill Creek Valley neighborhood was a center of African-American life in St. Louis, home to over twenty thousand residents and eight hundred businesses, and whose inhabitants included Josephine Baker, Scott Joplin, and Madame C.J. Walker, and whereas the heart of the Mill Creek Valley neighborhood was approximately four hundred and fifty acres and roughly bounded by Grand Boulevard on the west, Olive Street on the north, Twentieth Street on the east, and the railroad tracks on the south, and whereas in the late nineteen fifties, virtually every building in that geography was razed in what was then turned blight removal and urban removal, renewal, and over twenty thousand residents, mostly African-American, were displaced from their homes, businesses, and community, and whereas the city of St. Louis in partnership with Harri Stowe University, the City Park Soccer Stadium, the Great Rivers Greenway Brick Line Greenway, former residents of the neighborhood and other stakeholders wishes to identify and recognize Mill Creek Valley and those who live there and remind and educate the citizens of St. Louis as to the injustice that forced removal, and whereas it is fitting and proper that the St. Louis Board of Aldermen should pause in its diverse legislative duties and responsibilities in order to recognize the enduring spirit of Mill Creek Valley and its contributions to the city's history and culture, now there be it resolved by this honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to commemorate the history and culture of the Mill Creek Valley neighborhood and the disproportionate and unjust impact on African-American St. Louisans due to its demolition. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at the time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor, introduced on the tenth, on this tenth day of February twenty-twenty-three by the Honorable Marlene Davis, Alderwoman Nineteenth Ward, adopted this day, February tenth, twenty-twenty-three, as a testament. February tenth, twenty-twenty-three, as a testament.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth, would you like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 189?
I'd like to make a motion to please adopt.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt Resolution 189. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Members of the board, I just want to thank Alderwoman Davis for bringing this resolution forward. I talk about it all the time, how much of a nerd I am about history, but Mill Creek, I studied one of the most because of the way I used to hear my grandfather talk about it. And when you see people present on it, it's like you can really feel the spirit. When you see the pictures, they are amazing, inspiring, and encouraging of what we could still be, right? It had that not happened. And Vivian Dawson, I almost kind of follow her around when she speaks. And I love the way she says, "We were here," right? "We were here." So, thank you again for bringing this resolution. I'd like to move that it be passed and banked.
There's been a motion to, by the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, and seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we approve the motion and bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I too want to thank the Alderwoman from the nineteenth for bringing this forward. I just wanted to take a quick moment to recognize local black artist Damon Davis, who was the designer of the memorial there at St. Louis City Park, and recognize that our city has an incredible wealth of currently living black artists, including Damon Davis, Stan Chisholm, Valencia Ms. V., the list can go on and on, Brandon Vaughn, Christopher Birch. We have such a wealth of living black artists that I wanted to just recognize here today. Thank you.
Further discussion, Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, I rise in support of this resolution. Mill Creek is a stain on the history of St. Louis. I wish it was the only time that it happened, it should have been the only time. We will soon, at some point, have to address what happened in the Central West End in the late seventies and when they blighted with eminent domain and told the black people that they were going to put them back. And at that time, I think the Central West End was about eighty percent black, it's the opposite now. It's the same thing that happened with moving the twentieth ward, the highest voting black ward. Every time black people have success in things, not only in this city, and many, many times, the move is to destroy it, to tear it up. That's why I'm never gonna let you all forget that this, this board did a dishonorable thing by tearing up the highest voting ward, Democratic ward in the city, that's a dishonor. So, it's not just Mill Creek, it is the Central West End, it is the twentieth ward. And as long as you continue and do not apply the lessons learned from history, and in this case, as long as you don't do some kind of reparations or some type of making it right, it will continue to be a stain on this city, and it will continue to bring down this city and not make it be the great city that it is. Cheating in any form, destroying neighborhoods in any form is a wrong thing. It is especially wrong when the neighborhoods are successful and thriving at a time when there are so many things that's against them. The people of Mill Creek could not move hardly any further west at that time. We have a very famous house in the forty-six-hundred block of Lavity that will now become part of the new twelfth ward. And it was that black people couldn't move across a certain place. And when the people moved into the, black people moved into the forty-six-hundred block of Lavity right at Marcus, they were told, "You can't live here." And they had to go to court and fight and make sure that they were able to live in the house of their choice. When I first came to this board in nineteen ninety-one, one of the news, national news outlets came and did a thing on South St. Louis and went to have black and white people apply for housing and to buy cars and the whole thing. And guess what? It was still going on in that we didn't want black people in South St. Louis. So, they would tell the black people that it cost more to rent an apartment or cost more to buy a house or cost more to even buy automobiles if they came to South St. Louis. And this was in the nineties. So, that's why by the time it got to be two thousand and one, I was surprised that successful black high-voting ward, don't lose population, we would do with this racism. When I come back here, which I intend to do, I intend for us to deal with that. I intend for us to give the real twentieth ward their ten million dollars back that you stole in ward capital. I intend for this city to own up to what is done. When, it's always easy, twenty, fifty, seventy years later, "Oh, that was wrong." You don't need to wait twenty, fifty, seventy years later. You need to address these things when they happen. The Central West End, there absolutely ought to be some kind of addressing of what they did. It's all over the paper. "Oh, we promise we're not gonna move the black population, we're, we're gonna bring you back." No, they weren't. My husband worked at CDA when this happened, and he was a monitor in that area, and he told me they're never coming back. He's right, they haven't. And we keep building all this high-rise, white, white-populated buildings to make sure that that doesn't happen. But there's a history of what happened. Mill Creek is one of them, but also is the Central West End, and so is the twentieth ward. I want to thank the Alderwoman from the nineteenth for sponsoring this. And I see Ms. Arnold here, thank her. I've spoken to Barbara Martin many, many times about Mill Creek and about the things that Ms. Arnold is doing to work on making sure that's never forgotten, and also about the green paths and things like that. I thank all of them. But I am not ever gonna be satisfied with everybody just, someone just saying, "Oh, let's memorialize this." No, let's make it right financially, let's pay people back. You can never give me my right to vote. And I talk about my right to vote, but it was two-thirds of the people in my ward that you took their right to vote. But how do you fix that? And you, not personally, but this Board of Aldermen, especially Francis Lay. I went to Tom Villa's wake, Matt Villa sat in the middle of the wake to explain to me he didn't know what he was doing and he was sorry. And I, you know, so, other people, now that they understand, they're like getting away from it. And they all put it on Francis Lay where it should be because he was the mayor and should have done better. I don't believe that most of the people know, and many, many of them have apologized to me, but an apology is not enough. We need our money, we need to find some way for the city to acknowledge its wrong, not only for Mill Creek, but the Central West End and for the twentieth ward. And I will continue to fight that battle. And again, I want to thank the Alderwoman from the nineteenth for sponsoring this resolution. We should never forget our checkered racist past because we continue to do it over and over. And that's why we're so comfortable in getting up and saying, because nothing in the redistricting said, "This is racist, this is wrong." Just like the Alderman from the eleventh was saying about the mechanics bill. It doesn't scream overt racism now. There's something called covert racism that has a bad an outcome as possible. And that's what happened with Mill Creek, a horrible outcome. People hardly have any place they can live, but yet you're tearing up their communities and moving them out and making it something beautiful for somebody else to live, and then thinking that that's all right and that people are gonna forget about it. We were here is a good thing, and we should still be there. And we should start claiming our history and making people financially responsible for, how do you fix that? One of the things that happened with Mill Creek is the people migrated to the fourth ward, to the Ville and around Sumner. They were the recipient of all of that. Because that happened, it made a very rich culture in the Ville. And I have a book called The Ville, Greater Ville, and I'm gonna try to maybe get some more copies and share it with my colleagues because it tells that story, because people start searching where they could live. So, they got to the Ville, and then they said, "But you can't come across this part." And then the Greater Ville, "You can't live in the Greater Ville." So, there's always been someplace where people... There's always been someplace in this city, many, that where black people couldn't live, and then you went and tore up the places where they did live, almost like you're saying you don't belong in the city. And I'm not talking to any of you specifically, I'm talking about this city and the rules and the people who were in place that did that, and the shame on them. And thank you, Ms. Arnold, thank you, Ms. Martin. I saw Ruby up there, hi, Ms. Bonner, how you doing? It's one of my sweeties. Thank all of you all for what you do, and thank the Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Alderman from the eighteenth.
First of all, let me say the Mill Creek tragedy, well, the tragedy. And thank you, my Alderwoman from the nineteenth. But we still have this tragedy going on right now. It started with Team Four right in North St. Louis. We had these buildings boarded up on one floor right today. That, and when it rained, snowed, and any other inclement weather, those buildings eventually had to be torn down. So, once those buildings are torn down, we are setting up a pattern, the same pattern that happened in Mill Creek, that happened in the Central West End. Because I was a youth specialist, that's where I first started working as an older teenager running programs and anti-poverty programs. And I, and I worked in the Central West End, it was part of the area that I was working in. The point is, we should learn from the past of Mill Creek. We should learn from the past of the Central West End because on Westminster, there was not a house north of, a block north of Delmar right now. There were worse than Olive Street, which was Gaslight Square, Washington, which was Strobe, Gaslight Square, Westminster, which was one house, all the way from Taylor, one or two houses, all the way from Taylor to Vanuver. What is the point? The city, state, and federal government got together, and you go down Westminster, down that same area right today, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe the conditions existed that existed then. Why, so what is the point? The point is, we pay taxes north of Delmar, we can't even have, they make all kinds of excuses, including black and white people won't do it. Why we can't have the building boarded up on all floors so that the buildings don't have to be torn down? I'm gonna say it again, and we would save money. The city would actually save money, save businesses, be safer because the more houses you have on the block, the more eyes you have to watch for other people. For example, I walked from Delmar to West Florence a sun, not too long ago, through the, through Animal Lawn, and then I turned and went down Clay. Where you have a lot of people, there aren't any vacant houses. But where you, but then one block or two or three blocks over, where you have vacant houses, every house was vacant. Why do I think all those houses were vacant? Because I used to live in the Ville. Why do you think, because once you start having vacant houses, it's like cancer, it spreads. People start burning them up, people start stealing, people start, doing all kinds of... What is the point? We can't do anything about, we should learn from our history. Unfortunately, Mill Creek is gone, it's not gonna come back. Unfortunately, the Central West End is gone. People live, they're not coming back, unfortunately. We can do something about north of Delmar, we can put windows in buildings. When we use the word huz, housing and urban development. When we use the word urban, we're talking about black, it's a code word for black people, the same as crime and all kinds of other code words. We have been using the, we have been writing a proposal for poor black people to the federal government and for the last, a long time, maybe ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, we've been fixing up, at least for the last thirty, forty, because I know of that because I was working in the Central West End, and I was teaching school and teaching kids at Field Elementary School where I started teaching, and now it's an apartment. So, the point is, and the kids can't, the point is that what we can do now, since we have the history, history does no good unless you can act on it. We all know the history, now let's do something that is, we can do. Let's use that money to board up those buildings, buy the equipment we need, board up those buildings on all floors, and after two years, let's put some windows in so that the building, all the buildings can blend in with the other buildings. And then we can do that. And then we won't have to spend more than fifteen million dollars a year cutting grass for vacant buildings. We won't have to have the building, the wars north of Delmar, the future wars north of Delmar, as big as, almost now, eight or nine wars, five wars, almost as big, potential wars, almost as big as nine, the space. That means, so, we can do something about that. If we don't do anything about it, first, let me tell the black people, it's your fault, it's our fault. Because we can't expect white people to save us. We are our own liberators. We're gonna have to, we have white friends here and all over the place. But your friend will help us if we help ourselves. If we don't do it, it's an indictment on black people, us as black leaders. That's all I'm gonna say. And we, and we pay taxes. I mentioned that we did, we're forced to give up three hundred years of free labor. There's no more, and the only thing required to be a citizen is to be born here. And so, I'm gonna stop, but thank you, but we need to do something that... So, what I'm asking is, before I leave this board, I'm not running again. If you're serious, first to the black people. And I'm calling it out. If you're serious, you will work to make sure that these buildings are boarded up. If you're not, you're just talking. And you're just showboating and talking. But if you, if you are serious, you'll make sure what we can do, we can do. Because we can't do everything, but all I ask is, let's please other board, let's always do what we can do and use the money in the most effective and efficient way for everybody because blacks gonna be here and whites, but St. Louis will not grow, it will never grow, and you're never gonna get rid of us. So, we are all a citizen, it is in all our best interests to use our tax dollars to benefit all of us, and we will be safer. And that's all, and now we, and the false narrative, and I'm gonna stop, about police, it's not about more police, the neighborhood that is safest has the most resources. Let me repeat that, the most resources, we must utilize our resources to make everybody safe. Whites can't be safe because they're gonna be robbed, and blacks can't be safe. And they said, "Put them in jail," but let's do the right thing before we have to put anybody in jail. Thank you.
Need further discussion? With that, I would like to invite up to the dais the former residents of Mill Creek to formally accept the resolution.
Again, good morning. This is really special, and I'm glad that members of the Mill Creek Valley Committee were able to be here this morning. I know that this is an opportunity for them to also put this in archives as they tell the history, as we are moving forward. It won't end today, it won't end this year, it won't end the next decade. We have a lot, we have an awful lot that we must admit, that we must find some remedy to, and that we must make sure that everyone who has the responsibility of governing this city and this region, recognize the needs, and make sure that all of the policies and all of the laws that are put in place have equal justice for all. and all of the laws that are put in place have equal justice for all. In this resolution, as you heard, and as it was read, "The good works of God I must give to you today." Because you see, he works in mysterious ways. I had a project in the nineteenth ward that failed. The project was called Mill Creek. And I had assigned some capital funds to help the project. So, take a guess where those capital funds are going to now. It is going to the Mill Creek Valley Committee. And if you happen to have a few extra dollars, they could use it. Because we have to have the Wayfair signage. We'll have to have some medallions for those buildings of importance where residents lived in Mill Cry, Mill Creek, that were important to this country on a higher level of giving. There's a lot that has to be done to make sure that this is appropriate and that it reflects our city well. And it's something that people will want to come off from all over the country. For those who used to live here and their grandchildren who know about it, we want it to be done well. And I tell you, I, I gotta say it again, God works in mysterious ways. How would you ever, you couldn't even plan it if you wanted to. That a project named Mill Creek failed, and it was already in my ward, I wouldn't have to go talk to somebody else. So, it was really easy. So, I'm very pleased today to honor you and ask you to accept this recognition on behalf of this Board of Aldermen and all the, all of the many things that we wish we could do, but don't always have money to do. Um, and look at where you're going. Most especially, look at what you've already accomplished. Vivian Gibson, in case nobody knows, raise your hand. She's already written a book about it, because she used to live in Mill Creek. I love it. You're accepting?
I'm accepting.
All right, and please give her some words, Judith, Judith Arnold.
It's really something special when your work is being recognized. It's really something special when you are working with some formidable founders. Uh, Vivian Gibson, author of Children of Mill Creek. Dr. Malika Horn, author of Motherwet. And our leader and pusher and facilitator, Barbara Martin. She brought us all together and made it very possible for this project to move forward. I appreciate very much the recognition that we're receiving today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
It is often said that those who do not remember our history are doomed to repeat it. And I want to thank the former residents of Mill Creek Valley for coming today, for sharing your stories with us, for ensuring that we remember history, um, so that this body may never repeat the wrongs of the past. That I will, we will move to the approval of the minutes. Alderman from the twenty-third. You are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
So, I will move the, for the approval of the minutes from the February seventh meeting.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderperson from the fourteenth, uh, that we approve the minutes from Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
I think we have.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Industrial Development, sorry, to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board, Mr. Richard Bradley.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized for the mayor's appointment uh, to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
Thank you, I move to accept the reappointment of Mr. Rich Bradley to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the eleventh, that we confirm the appointment of Mr. Rich Bradley to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board, Mr. Aaron Williams.
Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized on the mayor's appointment of Mr. Aaron Williams to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Mr. Aaron Williams to the St. Louis Economic, Economic Development Tax Board.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we confirm the appointment of Mr. Aaron Williams to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Industrial Development Authority, Mr. Jamal Seward and Mr. James Fow.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, or is Alderwoman from the nineteenth? Uh, you are recognized for the mayor's appointment of Mr. Jamal Seward, uh, and Mr. James Fow to the Industrial Development Authority.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt, uh, the, uh, the recall. Uh, we have a second.
We have a second. We, we know where you were going, so. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Industrial Development Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board, Ms. April Ford Griffin.
Alderman from the fifth, you are recognized on the mayor's appointment of, uh, Ms. April Ford Griffin to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we support the mayor's appointment of Ms. April Ford Griffin to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, that we confirm the appointment of April Ford Griffin to the St. Louis Economic Development Tax Board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll dispense with line item seven. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
We have none.
Uh, Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, I'd like to request that Board Bill fifty-five be moved to the end of the third reading, uh, final passage calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
We have none.
Reference to committee.
We have none.
Second reading of report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with a due-pass recommendation. Board Bill number one forty-one, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services authorizing the twenty-two St. Louis Works and the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Programs citywide, providing for the construction and reconstruction of gutters, streets, driveways, spot curbs, sidewalks, alleys, traffic controls, beautification, tree planting, resurfacing, and related engineering adjustments listed herein, appropriating nine-point-eight million from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for description of the work, approval of plans, and specifications, work and material guarantees, estimated costs from the city funds, and supplemental agreements and reversions, authorizations applicable, state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive orders, contract advising, advertising statutes, and public safety, I'm sorry, and pub, and a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one fifty-four, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Davis in ordinance to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of city residents by restricting motor vehicles across, motor vehicles access to alleys as provided herein in the Jeff Vanderloo Gate District West, Tiffany and Midtown neighborhoods, and those portions of the Botanical Heights and Shaw neighborhoods located within the boundaries of the nineteenth ward, as had been established in ordinance number six-eight-nine-eight-one. Board Bill number one fifty-six, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three, as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps and other street traffic calming installations to calm the flow of traffic on certain blocks in the nineteenth ward. That is the extent of second reading.
Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the mo, board, I'd move to suspend the rules to move, to move Board Bill one forty-four as, I'm sorry, one forty-one as amended. Uh, and also one fifty-four as amended and one fifty-six as amended, da, down to the perfection calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the, uh, the perf, you said perfection consent calendar?
That, that's fine, too. I said perfection, but if nobody objects, consent is fine also.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Pe, I'm sorry, Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicarrel. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Gross. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer. Alderman Cone. Twenty-seven aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to suspend the rules. Alderwoman from the first.
I just wanted to make sure people noted that, um, on the agenda says nine, eight, we actually have fifteen million in, in the original bill, so I don't want people to be confused. We have the right bill on our desk, but it was just a little screw there.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Report of special committees.
We have none.
Perfection consent calendar.
We have none.
Yes, we just.
Yes, we do, we do. Board Bill number one forty-one, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the twenty-two St. Louis Works and Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Programs citywide, providing for the construction and reconstruction of gutters, streets, driveways, spot curbs, sidewalks, alleys, traffic controls, beautification, tree planting, resurfacing, and related engineering adjustments listed herein, appropriating fifteen million from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for description of the work, approval of the plans, and specifications, work and material guarantees, estimated costs from the city funds, and supplemental agreements, and revision, revision, revision authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and public work emergency clause.
We have two more.
Board Bill number one fifty-four, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Davis in ordinance to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of city residents by restricting motor vehicle access to alleys as provided herein in the Jeffer, in the Jeff Vanderloo Gate District West, Tiffany and Midtown neighborhoods, and those proportions of the Botanical Heights and Shaw neighborhoods located within the boundaries of the nineteenth ward, as has been established in ordinance number six-eight-nine-eight-one. Board Bill number one fifty-six, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three, as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps and others traffic calming installations to calm the flow of traffic on certain blocks in the nineteenth ward.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized on, uh, the approval of the perfection consent calendar.
I move we adopt the, uh, have the approval of perfection consent.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt the courtesy, uh, or sorry, the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Alderman from the ninth.
Amended.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would move that we pass, or that we, uh, make one forty-one as amended in bank.
There's been a motion, uh, from the Alderman from the twenty-fourth that we pass, uh, one forty-one in bank, seconded by the Alderwoman from the fourth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right, it has been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt the perfection consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vicarrel. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Gross. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alder, Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-seven aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to adopt the perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill number one eighty, committee sub, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Ingracia. An ordinance related to the establishment of right to counsel for tenants facing eviction or equivalent proceedings, a mechanism to provide counsel for all tenants in covered proceedings, a requirement for owners, agents of owners and landlords to dis- to disclose to their tenants certain information regarding the right to counsel in covered proceedings, a plan for oversight and implementation of counsel for persons in, in covered proceedings, and a requirement for an annual report including a servability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 180, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we perfect Board Bill 180, committee substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill number 180, committee substitute as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as many of you know, Board Bill 180 establishes a right to counsel for tenants facing eviction in the city of St. Louis. It's modeled after programs that are happening in about 15 other cities in three other states. Um, the, this work started in New York City in 2017. Um, there's lots of evidence that having representation in eviction proceedings is not only helpful to the tenant themselves, but also landlords. Um, most of you, I think, were, um, part of or, or listened to the committee hearing where we had over 50 people testify in favor of this moving forward, not just including tenants themselves, but experts in this area. We had McCormick Baron, which is one of the largest affordable housing landlords in the city of St. Louis advert- um, support this, as well as the St. Louis City Housing Authority, and a few, um, small, smaller mom and pop type landlords. And so I think it's incredibly important, um, evidenced by the success in other places. We know the eviction crisis is going to snowball again subsequent to the moratorium on evictions being lifted. A huge percentage of landlords that are coming into our city from out of state who are investor-owned properties and not being the responsible landlords that they need to be, um, to ensure that the people who deserve to stay in their homes are able to do so for as long as possible. And I'm happy to take questions.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, when I was in law school, that we have something called Rule 13. Rule 13 says that if you have enough credits, you can, um, practice law. I actually worked at legal services doing just this very thing, which was to keep people in their housing. I am also a landlord. I am a responsible landlord. I, um, get so sick and tired of people vilifying landlords. I put a lot of money into my properties, as, as does my husband and people that I know, to ca- make sure that they have a habitable place to live, that tenants have a habitable place to live, that they have a right to live in clean, safe environments. I have a string of rules that, uh, probably nobody else has in their lease. I write my own leases, so we don't tend to have problems at our properties. Um, I got a lot of letters or emails from people saying, please vote for this, uh, board bill. I'm not opposed to tenants, uh, being represented. I did that. I did that while I was a landlord. I was set free to go and represent tenants by Dan Glazier, who's the head of legal services, who was then in housing, because I understood it. What I do not like is when, um, that all landlords are treated the same, and some of the people who wrote to me said, well, we could keep them in the housing longer and we could pay less money. Why would I get less money for the places that I keep up? And why would I then have to go on and on and on back to court for somebody who just has not paid their rent or is a bad tenant? Now, there are things in the law that allow you, if they've committed a crime, like you can get them out in really 10 days if it's certain things that they do. And I do that if somebody starts to be a problem tenant. But my balancing of the scales is, um, that when we pass the thing about not being able to evict people, I am now seven to eight thousand dollars in the hole. I will bring any of you all to any of my properties, and you can come and look at any time, not, you know, something that's planned, and my properties are taken care of. So why will I be treated the same way as a landlord that's a problem landlord? That's what I don't like. So the people who wrote to me saying, well, maybe they won't have to pay all the money, yes, they should have to pay all the money. If you got where I live, if you rent from me and I keep my apartment up and you get in trouble, it is not my responsibility to provide housing. I am not the government. I am a small business owner, and I am not the government. And so then if the government wants them to stay in the housing longer, then they ought to pay their rent, because that is not fair. The city doesn't give them free water, the utilities don't give them free utilities, but somehow landlords are all vilified as these horrible people that don't do good housing. And that's just not true. And that, one of the things that happened with the law that we passed is a lot of, uh, about not being able to evict people, is it caught up a lot of small landlords. Maybe they lived in a one fam- two family and they rented the other one out, and they relied on that extra rent to pay their bills, or it was a three family or a four family. I am, again, not opposed to people having legal counsel at any means. I also was a public defender, so I represented people when they had criminal charges, and people would say, how could you represent those, uh, guilty people? I didn't represent any guilty people. I represented people who were accused of a crime. So the thing that I wish you would stop stressing, and it's not you, uh, the sponsor, but the people who wrote to me, is about how you can let people stay in apartments longer and not pay the rent that's due them. That is not fair to small business owners who are doing the correct thing. So if you want to use legal maneuvers when you just stop paying your rent because you somehow think that I'm supposed to be responsible for the rent, then I think that there has to be a companion bill that says, when you're doing these maneuvers, that we have some kind of bond or something set up that if it comes out that the landlord hadn't done anything wrong, that the rent gets paid to the landlord, because otherwise it is not fair. And I intend to go and talk to Dan Glazier and some other people that I know in housing about how do you do this fairly? Because just dragging something out so that people don't have to pay rent, when I evict people, it is because they didn't pay rent, or they are a bad actor. And it's not, then they come in and say, oh, well, I just didn't have the money at the time. They don't come in and say, it, it's not a good apartment and it's not a safe place to live. But, so giving them somebody that's a legal counsel that just wants to drag it out, that's not a good idea to me. Fighting a landlord that has a horrible condition, um, that water's coming in, that holes are in the wall, that, uh, they don't spray, and they have all kind of mice and bugs and stuff, I don't have any problem with that. A landlord that has behavior problems, that the people are scared to come home, safety, I don't have any problem with that. I do have problems with categorizing all landlords as bad landlords. Um, and even saying, well, a lot of them are from out of state, that doesn't make you a bad landlord. What makes you a bad landlord is if that you don't manage your property in a, um, mindful manner. A lot of people don't like Section 8. One of the things that we've always done in our properties, we keep them half Section 8 and half market rate. You cannot tell the difference, because the difference is the management style. I'm a hands-on managed pers- management person. Um, my husband teases me, because when he manages, they'll say, when is Ms. Tyus gonna come back? And he says, you're so mean to them. I'm not mean to them. What I have is rules, and we follow the rules. So we have people that stay 15, uh, years or more who say, I like living where I live because I know that it's gonna be a good place for my family and I to live. So all landlords are not bad. I reject that, uh, category of bad landlords, evil landlords. They want some, to get paid for, uh, people to live in. So does gas. Spire wants you to pay. So does the city water department, they want you to pay. So does Amren, they want you to pay. And MSD is just out of control with the bills that we next now pay. I'm telling you, MSD is out of control. So if you run up, talk about landlords, oh, and let's not forget, the grocery store doesn't give free groceries either. I've never seen a grocery store. So please stop stereotyping. And any of you all want to come to any of my properties, I will take you to them, because we did start out wanting to do good housing in North St. Louis. I, uh, the Alderman from the 3rd has been, I have a property in his ward, he can tell you, that my properties are all, in fact, we just spent $30,000 upgrading the bathrooms and the kitchens, because we've been operating since 1989. Please stop acting as though all landlords are bad. There's some bad actor tenants too, that do all kind of things, okay? There are some bad actor tenants. They tear your apartment up, they move people in it. Um, I can show you pictures of what, I take pictures before people move in my apartment, and then I can show you pictures of some of them when they go out. Um, and they're mad, because once you start asking them to pay their rent in a timely manner, then they get mad. Um, we put a tenant out who had been for a long time, because he shot a gun off in our apartment. That allowed me to put him out in 10 days, and I did. He had been a very good tenant, but he started to get, uh, behavior problems. So if you manage your place correctly, you should get paid in a correct manner. And if somebody gets in trouble, um, and can't pay their rent, then they need to go fi- apply for resources from the government, not think that the landlord is responsible for that. There's no other group of people that you ask to pay for the services they provide. The grocery store does not pay for your services, neither do the utilities. And as I said, we need to do something about MSD, because they are out of control. I looked at my bills of when I first moved in my house, and I look at them now, and I used, we used to pay every three months, and I pay now twice what I paid every three months for one month at MSD. And they continue and come back every other year asking for increase. So I am not opposed to tenants being, uh, represented. I am actually gonna vote for this. But don't send me any emails saying about how you want to keep tenants in my apartment irrespective of if I've done anything wrong or not, because we just don't want them to be homeless. I don't want them to be homeless either. And they can stay in my apartment unless they're a bad actor, but the government is responsible for that, not me. So when we put these kind of, uh, board bills together, we also need to put a way to compensate the people who we unintentionally harm. Not the bad actor landlords, but the good landlords that get caught up in this. If we're gonna do this kind of thing, we need a companion bill that we pay those people, because it's not right. I'm out of $7,000, because I don't feel comfortable as an alderperson trying to get the stuff, um, from the government, okay? Now to come back to the city where I actually represent somebody. So we just out of it, because we did a board bill and an ordinance that ultimately the Supreme Court said was not legal. But I still don't have my $7,000. And we use that money to put back into my properties to keep them up, so they have central air, so they have heat, so they have flooring, so they have, uh, we provide, uh, stove, refrigerator, dishwasher, and microwave. We provide, uh, uh, a place in the backyard where they got, uh, porches, and they also have patios, and we're putting off-street parking, so we're continually upgrading our apartments. And small businesses cannot afford to lose money, because we have done bad legislation. And that was a piece of bad legislation. You may think that keeping people from being evicted was good, but it's only good is if you compensate the people that you're harming. So when we do this, I intend to find a way to say, if it's the tenant's fault and we have given them a right to have counsel, then we also provide a way to pay the landlords. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Pr- Madam President. Uh, Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, I want to first make note, there were several of us that added our names as cosponsors in committee, and that did not make it over, um, onto the bill that's in front of us, so I just want to make sure that I'm added as a cosponsor, um, and there were several others.
Looks like Alderman from the 9th, Alderwoman from the 26th, Alderwoman from the 13th, Alderman from the 28th, Alderman from the 11th. Please add me as well. Uh, Alderman from the 12th, uh, Alderman from the 18th.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that, that was kind of where I wanted to start, but there's, so what this bill does is establishes the right to counsel. It doesn't say anyone must be allowed to remain in a, in an apartment or a home. It does not say, it's not actually any rental assistance. There's no money involved in this, um, that is going directly to tenants or landlords. What it does is set up a system that people can get help getting through the legal process. And so when tenants are, it's the same as in the criminal justice system, when a, when a criminal defendant is, uh, represented by counsel, that helps everyone. That helps everyone navigate the system in a way that makes sense. Um, in, in the United States, we designate that, uh, the Constitution says that we shall have a right to assistance for criminal cases, but not for other legal cases. And eviction cases change people's lives and affect them for the rest of their lives. Um, even just the filing of an eviction case can remain on someone's record and keep them out of housing going forward. But this isn't even about keeping people necessarily in a space if it's, uh, unsafe, or if they haven't paid the rent, or if they can't afford to be in that. All we're doing is asking for assistance, helping them navigate the system. Um, these proceedings can move incredibly quickly. Um, they can get a hearing for the next week, and if they're not able to show up in person, then they can be evicted, uh, without, without even showing up in court, right? Um, and we have a problem, and the Alderwoman from the 6th has worked hard on preventing illegal lockouts, um, in the city of St. Louis, and that's, that is important work as well, that you can't be boarded out of your home with no access to be able to get any of your belongings uh, without a court order. And so we need, we continually need support to make sure that that is being enforced and people aren't losing all of their, um, their earthly belongings. So, um, a couple of things I want to note, um, there, this, we would not be the first city that is doing this. There are several cities who are already, um, who already have these laws in place. I believe 15 municipalities, um, that it prevents people from falling into homelessness. It helps tenants navigate, or it helps tenants navigate the system, and it helps landlords. So a lot of landlords, our bigger buildings, that are bigger rental companies, are represented by big aggressive attorneys. Um, if you, if you doubt what I'm saying, please go watch the John Oliver Last Week Tonight episode about rentals and tenants. Um, one of our St. Louis attorneys is represented on there in quite shocking form. Um, so please go check that out. And I'm not saying that he's representative of all attorneys. I am an attorney. Uh, we, we don't all act the same. Um, but there is, there is a system that is set up, um, that if we don't help people navigate, we risk being on the back end of a much more catastrophic system. Um, the more work that we can do to help them, maybe they just are crossing hairs. Maybe there is a situation where somebody didn't receive a check in the mail, or didn't understand that the rent was going up, or just needed a few extra days and had the money. So there are always going to be bad actor situations, where someone is conducting unsafe behavior, they're harming other people in their building, they're destroying a property, all of those types of things. Like, those things do happen, and we're not saying you have to keep people in homes, what we're saying is giving them legal counsel, so that they can walk carefully and, um, and purposefully fol- through the system, uh, so that, so that they have a better shot at staying in their home, um, and so that the landlords have a better shot at a good tenant. Um, I'm, I'm a tenant. I've been in my, my space for nine years now, um, and I, and my building is great, right? And I, I, I understand my lease, I understand my obligations. I've had a stable enough life and, uh, income at this point that I'm able to pay those bills every month. Um, but there was a, there's, for a lot of people, that is difficult. And as we're looking at a situation where more and more properties are being bought in cash, um, that are being bought by out-of-town investors, um, that are, that are booting people out after they take over the buildings, um, the more protections that we have in place just to help people through the system, um, the better it is for all of our citizens. Uh, we're able to better maintain quality affordable housing, housing that people want to live in, um, and we're able to maintain our neighborhoods as true neighborhoods and not just investor-owned properties. So this, again, these are not trying to make blanket statements. There is a wide diversity of people who rent, and a wide diversity of people who are landlords, who own property and rented out to others. Um, and so I, I don't want any of us to put our situations in front of the greater good here. Um, that we, we all have diverse experiences on this. The data shows that these types of programs work for the landlords, for the tenants, for the city. Um, it keeps us on the back end from having to, to help people get new resources, get things that have been left behind, going and picking up all of the bulk that's left over after someone gets evicted and someone, and the, and the landlord just dumps all of their belongings in the alley or on the street. Um, that's a tax, or you know, that's a, a burden on our refuse system. It's rehousing people. Um, all of those things that we can maybe prevent if we're going through this a little bit more intentionally, if we give people assistance. Even if we buy them two weeks so that they can find another place to live, get a moving van together, and get all of their things to a new space. All of that is great, and none of that, none of that is specifically included in this bill. This bill just says, you shall have the right to an attorney to help you through the process. Um, the last thing I want to highlight is we've had an incredibly successful mediation program that has been voluntarily done, uh, in the city of St. Louis. Um, over, so, over the course of the pandemic, it's run by advocates from Wash U, I believe, maybe, maybe St. Louis University as well, but I believe Wash U, um, has a clinic of law students who are helping people, and those mediations have really helped. So they have helped the landlords and they've helped the tenants. And those mediations have really helped. They have helped the landlords and they've helped the tenants. Um and it's not a you must keep this tenant no matter what type of situation and you are not compensated to that money. That is not what those situations are. Those mediations are finding a way forward in the middle that works for both the landlord and the tenant. And that's what this, that's what this legislation does. So I am, I'm really excited that we are taking this step forward. We know in the city um we have, we have a homelessness problem. We are, our kids in public schools are moving around a lot. Um we have, I believe it was a 20% homelessness rate for for kids in our public schools. So the more that we can help people stay in their homes, um the better. And uh I just, I want to thank the Alderwoman from the sixth for being so dedicated to getting this work done. The amount of hours of meetings with stakeholders, with neighbors, with um they've had organizing meetings and they've done tenants education. They've they've gone and done outreach in all of these different neighborhoods and it's it's an incredible amount of work to get to this point. So um I rise with my full support uh for this bill. Thank you.
Further discussion. Alderman from the 28th.
You know, I just want to make a quick point and emphasize that I don't really necessarily think that this bill is even bad for landlords. I think that this is something that really both sides should should be in favor of and should get behind. You know, I'll say from experience, I I'm a litigator and and I've dealt, I've gone into court before and had to deal with people on the other side that were not represented by counsel. And it really is, just makes the whole process um a lot harder for everybody. I mean, I would, I would, as a as an attorney, I would almost always prefer having another attorney on the other side. And um I think what we're going to see with this bill, and I think what what I'm helpful for, and I agree with 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 the Alderwoman from from the first, you know, we're we're not trying to, you know, keep people in places that they're not paying for, keep keep tenants that are that are really doing harm to to units in there. But what I could see happening a lot i- if we would pass this would be, you know, situations where, you know, you know, they they come to court and and if there's an attorney on both sides, both sides would make an a an agreement, hey, why don't we continue this for 30 days and come back and in 30 days you guys can, you know, move out on your own. And you know, I think that that's helpful for everybody. I because you know, A, we we got a lot of good testimony at the um hearing from folks talking about the Scarlet E problem. I never really had an appreciation um for how much an eviction judgment really sticks on someone's record. So I think, you know, what we can do, whatever we can do to to help folks avoid that, help some land on their feet. Um and then B, you know, I know landlords, when they actually get an eviction judgment on someone and serve it and get someone booted out, a lot of those times to to the Alderwoman from the first point, you know, those people aren't really motivated to to clean the apartment up or or do nice things to the apartment on on the way out sometimes. Um so you know, if we can make the process of eviction and give it a chance to be more amicable and give it a chance both sides to be able to talk through it, you know, so that, you know, you landlord doesn't feel like I have to get a judgment today in court because the person's here right in front of me and if I don't, I might never see him again. You know, this this just gives, this just gives both sides options, gives both sides time to work things out. So I think that we're, this is going to be one of those things that in a few years, we're going to look back and everybody is going to be, you know, glad we did it and it's going to be like, oh, how would we ever do it without it? Um and and I would also just note, you know, I've talked to to folks, you know, like from the realtors and stuff and no one's, no one's opposed to this. So you know, I I think we should should pass this and and I'm enthusiastically supportive of it. Thank you.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to rise in support of Board Bill 180, uh Committee Substitute As Amended. However, I would note that by rising in support of this bill, I am not necessarily rising in opposition to the comments made by the Alderwoman of the first. Uh now, as we are all very well aware, though I'm a legislator, I'm not a lawyer myself, so I have to approach legislation and I've always had to approach it from a a humanities perspective, you know? Uh from a Universal Declaration of Human Rights, from a what are other cities doing, from a what do I believe as a citizen uh and member of my community is best for the most people? And I believe that this is a bill that represents uh the most good for the most people. Are there landlords that are uh vilified or unfairly treated or unfairly demonized perhaps, I should say? Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sure there are. Are there renters that are likewise taken advantage of by the landlords? Be they good renters or bad renters? Absolutely. What is so complicated about legislation and board bills and and governance at its core is there are never simple answers. There's always so many variables. There's always so much human diversity and variety that it can be difficult to render a decision. With Board Bill 180 and with this present situation before us, uh at least in my own interpretation, it is not the good landlords. I myself, when I was running for alderman, was a scared little renter with an excellent landlord, but I wasn't even sure if I could run for office if I wasn't a homeowner. I wasn't sure what my rights as a renter were if something happened within the the unit. It was a little shotgun apartment in South City, had beautiful yellow walls, uh loved it, miss it. Is there an opportunity that this might hurt a good landlord? I I don't know that there is. Is there a reality that good tenants are currently being hurt by not having this before us? Because it's not tenants like me who would have had the financial resources to seek legal counsel if something had happened. It is not tenants that are able to, or landlords that are able to to seek out their own legal representation. It's those that cannot. And I have to wonder, especially coming from the LGBTQ community, where so often, I mean, in the state of Missouri, you can be evicted, you can be denied housing just by merit of whom you love. Well, I have to think, what about my friends and my family in the community that don't have those same resources, but are renters? I have to think, what about my constituency that rents from companies in New York City or Atlanta or Houston? I have no idea if those were geographically correct, so bear with me colleagues, but I have to wonder about them who've never met their landlord, who don't speak with their landlord. They speak with a a toll-free number or so on and so forth. What are their rights in this? And in summation, yes, there are good landlords and yes, there are bad tenants, but there's also bad landlords with good tenants. And it is those situations where I believe that there is an opportunity for this board bill to do the most good for the most people, fully recognizing that no piece of legislation can ever be perfect. So with that, uh I once more rise in support of Board Bill 180, Committee Substitute As Amended. I likewise um do agree with some of the viewpoints expressed by the Alderwoman of the first. And I would encourage all of us to take, to see the forest not but for the tree, but for all of the trees. And with that, Madam President, I respectfully yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I rise in support of Board Bill 180, Committee Substitute As Amended. And for maybe a little bit different perspective, I am not opposed to landlords, property owners, by any stretch of the imagination. But as I shared with the bill's sponsor and others in the middle of the night via text messages, I shared with the sponsor the number of people in the fabulous Fifth Ward that I have had to personally go to bat for and help them avoid housing crises, help them to get into stable housing. I am not by any means against landlords and property owners. I just want tenants to have a fair share, a fair shake, to have legal representation. And in doing so, Madam President, I am confident that we will incrementally reduce our homelessness incidents in the city of St. Louis. With that, thank you, and I yield back.
Thank you. Alderman from the 18th.
Uh thank you, Madam President. I uh rise in full support of Board Bill 180. I think uh if there's an error, we should always err on the side of the people. I think some of us are religious. I'm a Christian, so I don't want to talk about, take liberties with other people. But I think uh all of us who are Christians say we're made in image of God. And nothing I've ever read in the New Testament says that we should take property rights over human beings. Let me say that, but I am not saying that uh we are not asking that the property be taken. We are not asking that people not pay rent. And I want to uh really respect the young, uh the Alderwoman who uh wrote this bill. We are asking that tenants get uh coun- get uh counsel, legal counsel. That's all we are asking in this bill. And that the landlords already have all kinds of resources, most of them. They, first of all, they have a roof over their head. And uh after that, they have most had the ability to uh uh and the legal mechanism to get the tenant out because those are political decisions. And I say political decision because if we had a, if everybody should really have a home, that should be a human right. That is a human right and we can afford it. So that wouldn't even be an issue, but since it's an issue today, uh the least that the tenants should have, coming up against people with resources, knowledge, sometimes some of them have money, some of them have skills, because to be a landlord, I'm sure you in many cases, you would have more skills than a person who's running, in many cases. So therefore, with all the resources and everything else, I think this gives the tenant an opportunity to keep their belongings and to get a fair shake. And so again, thank you, Madam President, thank you, Board of all the people. Uh again, I rise in full support of the
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Oh, is that, okay. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you. Our board bills are important. Our board bills should definitely uh provide opportunities to give our residents a better quality of life. But they also also should have uh information in them too. Because when you say you shall have legal counsel, I was hoping that we could have indicated where that specifically would come from. I know the city of St. Louis for over 20 years, we've been providing education for tenants' rights and landlords' uh positions and authority. Uh we funded those kinds of programs that long. And I also know that the legal services and Arch City Defenders and others have been providing free legal services for those for many years. And then of course, our our great universities, they all have law clinics that provide free services for our constituencies. And uh they go out of their way. The other part to that, as people learn about their rights and how to use them, is in many instances, uh the city of St. Louis intervenes anyway on behalf of a tenant uh when we're doing building inspections and or we get a phone call based on a health concern. The health department has a lot of power when a apartment is not in good living condition. And they move forward with that authority. And if you don't get all that you need and or, there's only so far they can go. I have used the state health department and shut down entire apartment complexes of multi-units. So we want to make sure that we are educating, make sure that we are educating our public as well and educate them even more. We have a public safety division that deals with nuisances. And that is another way that we find out about either bad tenants or bad landlords. And those things can be dealt with too, with the various forms of enforcement, whether it's law, health, or whatever it may be. So I want to make sure that we are truly committed to not just saying something, but we are truly committed to all those entities that we already fund to make sure that they're operating properly and or give them additional funding to have more available in these trying times for people. But I do know that the services are out here and as you hear me say all the time, the better we educate our constituency, the better quality of life they can have and they can also help their neighbors. So it's not about a board bill. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Let me first start. I started out by saying I was going to vote for this bill. However, I bet you that nobody in this room has more experience with evictions on both sides than me. I I was one of those people in law school working for legal services, keeping people in houses. I've been owning property for 79, since 1979 when we started um rehabbing. Um if the Alderman, Madam President, I would inquire if the Alderman from the 28th would yield.
The Alderman from the 28th, yield two questions from the Alderwoman from the first. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Um Alderman, so you said you've had to deal with evictions before in the city of St. Louis? Is that where you've dealt with them or in Illinois or where?
Uh not in the city of St. Louis. I've done, all my things I've ever done evictions for have been in Saint Clair County or Madison County, Illinois.
Well, I don't know how Illinois works, but I know there's nobody that gets an eviction in 30 days, okay? So that's the first thing. So even if your tenant is behind, is that how Illinois works? That normally it takes a little bit more than 30 days to get people out of an apartment?
Um I mean, if they're behind in their rent, you, the notice requirements pretty quick, actually. You can get a judgment. Yeah, and about that.
In 30 days? Then they need to come and teach that over in in Missouri, because I've been doing evictions since the 80s. And so what happens if the, normally if the tenant shows up and says, I need a continuance, they pretty much get one, okay? So um is that true? Is that what happens in Illinois?
Yep.
Okay, so mostly landlords don't start evictions um right away. So by the time you get to an eviction, most times the tenants are 30 or 60 days behind. So if you get another 30 days, then you're 90 days and then you get another 30 days. Um and so I I do evictions in Illinois, I mean in St. Louis. So let me ask you this. So in Illinois, um you have leases and you didn't have people who are uh at-will tenants because they um they don't have a lease and so you can give them 30 days notice and they have to get out for no reason at all. Is that the same thing in Illinois?
I don't want to say anything incorrect. I don't know off the top of my head. The, those are kinds of time requirements.
Okay, so that's what happens in Missouri, I can tell you. Um thank you. I don't have any further questions for you.
Thank you.
So um in Missouri, you don't have to have a lease to be a tenant. If you do not have a lease, you don't have hardly any rights. And a landlord can put a lot of things in a lease, as long as they're not illegal and which they're discriminatory, then you have to follow. Thus, in my lease, I say you can't sit on the front porch hanging out because that's where people enter. That's in my lease. Can't uh talk on the telephone and comb your hair. That's in my lease. Um so I have a, there's behavior uh things that are in my lease. I heard the Alderwoman talk about, from the eighth, talk about setting things out. I actually wrote the law back in the 90s, late 90s, early 2000s about not, that it's illegal for landlords to set things out in the front of the apartments or front of the building now. So they can't do that. If they're doing it, it's illegal. Um in Missouri, you cannot get people out pretty much in 30 days unless um you start like five days after they don't pay. If you go and you file, it's still going to take you more than 30 days. So when a landlord shows up, that's we, and the tenant hasn't paid, um they're already 30, 60 days. The other thing that people talk about, we keep talking about landlords that are big. What I've found in all my years is that a lot of time, the landlords who are written out, who have a two-family or a four-family or a three-family, they don't show up with attorneys either because they just own a piece of property and they're written it out. So they don't have a real knowledge about uh what's going on. So that's my concern, is the small landlord, which I found out pretty easy because I started doing Rule 13 in 1986, I believe it was. And that was, again, me working for legal services, trying to keep people in their houses um and in their homes. But over the years, I've learned, like I said, about the tenants that don't do the right thing and also that there's all these um smaller landlords and that when we make laws, we make laws that affect smaller landlords. So all of a sudden, if the tenant shows up with this power that the landlord can't do anything, then they use that power. During the time that we had the rule about you couldn't evict the tenants, you cannot believe the member, number of landlords, including myself, that heard from tenants that says, I'm not paying and you can't do anything about it. And they were lording it over the landlords. do anything about it." And they were lording it over the landlords. It's like, "No, I'm not going to pay, and I don't have to." So my concern is for smaller landlords who do not have a right to an attorney. And you bring somebody there, and the tenant has not paid, the first thing the attorney is going to do is ask for a continuance, because that's what I did when I was for legal services. But is that right for my, the grandmother or the older person who owns a place, and they may not make a lot of money, and that's maybe their supplemental income? What I said again was that I was going to vote for it, but we often bring these board bills that are not inclusive of making sure that we protect other people. We're not just supposed to protect the people to keep in the houses at all costs. We also should protect small business owners, and that's what your grandmother or your aunt or somebody is when they're owning a one- or two-family apartment, and they don't have resources. The reason I actually went to law school is because when we started to rehab, we had to pay so much money to lawyers, that that's why, that's one of the reasons I went to law school, because I wanted to better understand tenant landlord. And that's what I did. Now, I can get you out pretty fast until this crazy law we had, because if you don't pay me in five days, I will start an eviction. It's in my lease. My tenants all know how to get a hold of me. And if you have a problem, if you tell me, I will work with you. The Alderwoman from the eighth said, "Well, don't bring your personal situations." That's when I look at the height of hypocrisy and privilege, because that's what she does. She brings her personal situation. I bring the personal situation, that I've been doing evictions for a lot of years, and I've been doing helping people stay in houses for a lot of years. I've helped four of my tenants go to houses that Habitat built, because they were such good tenants. I told them, "You should not be paying rent. You should own your own property." They were such good tenants, they paid their rent on time. One of them moved in with a bag, a trash bag, and she moved into a Habitat house. Because I sat down with my tenants, I will teach them how to do a budget. I will explain to them that having cable is not more important than having a place to live and amarin. So you have to make, a lot of working-class people that are on the edge, they're resentful of a lot of things, because they see the very rich getting things, and they see the very poor getting things. But there are a lot of people that are barely making it, seniors being one of them, and they don't get a lot of help. So what I do is I try to teach my tenants about responsibility of being a tenant, and this is where you live. No, don't just walk in there and don't pick up the trash. If there's trash in front of the building, you live here, pick it up, okay? Pick it up. Don't let your children go out to the trash and take bags of trash and then put it by the trash can, because it's by where you live. Don't bring your friends over, hunking in front of the building, because you're disturbing everybody. And you can talk to any of my tenants, they'll tell you that. Ms. Tyus is really good to us. A few years ago, I was on this floor, and they locked up one of my tenants, and I went and I was his lawyer, and got him out, and got that case dismissed, because they would not give him bond, and they kept moving his bond back. He came in in January, and finally in April, I had to intervene. And soon this Alderwoman Tyus called. All of a sudden, the judge just gave him a bond hearing, and he was out of there, and ultimately, his case was dismissed. So I like the people who rent from me. I'm not scared of tenants. But I'm also telling you truthfully, don't make it that it's all pie in the sky with the tenants also, because I have now forty-something years of experience, and that makes me have to be careful about, we are passing these laws and acting like that it's only going to affect the big, bad landlords that are doing things wrong. If the Alderwoman from the sixth would yield?
Would the Alderwoman from the sixth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the first?
I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Did you hear me say, first of all, that I was going to vote for this bill, but I had questions about it? Did you hear that?
I sure did.
Thank you. So then what happens if you have the grandmother, and she doesn't? Because I'm telling you, I know a lot of older people, they got a little two-family, they live in one, they rented out. What happens then when the tenant shows up with a lawyer, and grandma doesn't have a lawyer?
I think that's a fair question, and I think that the board bill is designed because of the over, the high percentage of tenants that are never represented by a landlord, and the number of landlords that typically are. But that doesn't prohibit a poor outcome for the landlord who is not represented. It's just not a very, something that happens typically. And I haven't heard any, I haven't had no one come to me saying that I needed to be worried about advocating for landlords. And as I mentioned, we did have several small landlords indicate that they were supportive of this. There are studies from other cities that have already implemented this, where both landlords and tenants say that it's working well for them.
And I know, because that's, because there's so many bad landlords, that's why you have the advocacy, and nobody knows about. I just had a friend bought a building, person was in it, several people were in it. I advised him, start eviction proceedings immediately, because they were already several months behind when he bought the building. He said, "Oh, no, I'll just talk to them. I'll get them out." This just happened. Four months later, he's just getting them out, because of course, they lied right to his face. Wasn't anything he did, they just continued not to pay the rent. And though, when they went to the court, they said, "Well, we don't know if he owns that property or not," even though he could prove he owned the property. And he ended up four months more into debt, because they had not paid their rent. So it happens a lot. When I was legal services, I wish, a lot of people showed up that were landlords, and they were small. That's why I'm more careful about it now. When I was in legal services, at first, I was just like, "Those, just what I hear from you guys." But when you've been actually doing that, you see another side of the story. Not that it happens the way it should, but I'm just saying with small landlords, that happens too, and they don't know what to do, okay? And they don't have anybody to turn to. So I have no problems in people staying in property, and also fighting the landlords who don't make the property habitable. If it's inhabitable, nobody should be paying you rent. I'd rather get them out of there than to keep them in a place that has holes in the wall, windows cracked, mice, roaches, other bad actors that live there. That's not a good place to raise your family. So I'm for that. I'm just not for making a law that's also unfair, then you have an unintended consequence, because people haven't advocated for that or said that. And that's just what I've found, as I've done that. It's, when I go into court for my own building, then people say, "You're a lawyer? Oh, I own a building." And then they're trying to get me, and these are the small people that I meet that own these properties. So I'm telling you, it's not going to fix the other side of it. That's why I'm saying, how do we fix it for, not somebody who owns 5,000 properties and a foreign investor. It is for, it is for, I really do care about grandma, you know, because a lot of seniors, and you know, you've heard me advocate before about, let's not put every kind of application online or whatever. A lot of seniors don't have that kind of access. So I'm still going to vote for it, but I'm going to say that we need to look at, what if we have seniors that show up, and then we have somebody represented? Do we then say, "Well, we want to make sure that they have somebody can tell them," because they don't know. They don't, you know, my mother's eighty-seven years old. She's handling a piece of property for my sister. Now, she can call me, but my mother doesn't know how to handle that property. And if she would have to show up in court, I'm going to have to go there and take care of that. She's lucky she has a daughter that's a lawyer, but that doesn't happen. So I am all for keeping tenants, and I don't want homelessness. And as I said, I passed a rule that the landlords could not put their, the property out on the street. And the landlords came storming down here and saying, "You don't understand." I say, "Yes, I do. I contracted with the tenant. So if I evict somebody, it's up to me to do it in a respectful manner, because when you put it out on the streets like that, first of all, it's not fair to the neighborhood, because they didn't have a contract with the tenant, but also, it's not fair to the tenant. By the time I evict, and I've only really had to evict one person in thirty-something years, where I had to put their things out, because he just would not listen." And it really, so I ended up renting a storage unit. You could rent it for a dollar for the first month, and putting it in the storage unit, and then giving him a chance to go get his things, when you can often find those kind of things. So there are things that you can do. It cost me a little bit more money, because we had to move it, but I didn't put their stuff out on the street. But I just think that this bill is, should be directed toward larger landlords, and that we maybe need to tweak this to make it better for smaller landlords that don't have the resources that people assume that they have. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I agree with Alderwoman Tyus, but I want it to be known, Alderwoman Tyus is a unique landlord. So let's just be real. She's unique to other landlords. But when you have a landlord that has fifteen properties in your ward and renting to people, that's unsafe and unsanitary, it's a challenge. And so my heart is going out to the people that's renting and getting in situations, and as Alderwoman Davis said, they don't know. The renters don't understand. They don't know processes. They don't know how to get help. And so me being a landlord, I have people that can't pay their rent. And so, as Alderwoman Tyus said, I still have to keep the repairs up on the property. I still have to pay the bills that's due there, but at least my renters are trying to get assistance. But you have some renters that won't even go or apply for the help to get the rent paid. So it's really a catch-22. This bill is a catch-22. I don't think that people want to address the people like Alderwoman Tyus, because the people that rent from me, at Christmas, I don't even charge them rent, because that's my Christmas to them. But you have landlords that care enough and want to take care of their tenants. But you also have tenants, and I have section eight, that destroy your property. So you paying double to try to get your property back in shape to get ready to rent to somebody else. So it's really a catch-22 all the way around. And so I'm not even looking at the people that have fifteen, twenty buildings, but I'm looking at the small people that are trying to rent property to people that are trying to do right. But again, when you have those, I call them slum landlords, that don't care, just come once a month, pick up the rent, and do no improvements to their property, that's not fair to those tenants. So it's a catch-22 on this whole situation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the sixth, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to quickly address some of this most recent conversation, this bill is not intended to punish small, sweet grandmothers who are renting out their affordable housing units or other apartments or houses to our city residents. If I would have had any indication in the research that I did, I would have definitely made an exception for that. As the Alderwoman from the eighth mentioned, I've been working on this for two years. I can't even probably count the number of hours I've spent looking at what other cities are doing, how it's working there. And in the other pieces, that there is a requirement for measurement and outcomes to determine how the program is working each year. And so if we do, there is a mechanism in place to safeguard and make sure that we're addressing any challenges that we face to make sure the program is running as it needs to be, to help the most number of people. And with that, I would renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we perfect Board Bill Number 180, Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aide.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aide.
Alderman Bosley?
Aide.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aide.
Alderman Page?
Aide.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aide.
Alderman Kotar? Alderwoman Rice?
Aide.
Alderman Gunther?
Aide.
Alderman Bommer?
Aide.
Alderman Lappi?
Aide.
Alderman Stevens?
Aide.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aide.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Odenberg?
Aide.
Alderwoman Peel? Alderman Todd? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aide.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aide.
Alderwoman Walker? Alderman Vicaro? Alderman Orion?
Aide.
Alderman Cone? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd? Alderman Gross? President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans? Alderman Cone? Twenty-seven aye votes, one abstain.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the sixth on the perfection of Board Bill Number 180, Committee Substitute as amended. Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill Number 189, introduced by Alderman Cone. Board Bill Number 162, introduced by Alderman Stevens, Rice, Switzer, and Gunther. Board Bill Number 132, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, Vicaro, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Peel, Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Boyd, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Evans, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Board Bill Number 143, introduced by Alderwoman Peel.
This is consent.
Board Bill Number 158, introduced by Alderman Odenberg. Board Bill Number 166, introduced by Alderwoman Middlebrook. Board Bill 171, introduced by Alderman Kotar. Board Bill Number 187, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer. And Board Bill Number 55, introduced by Alderman Odenberg.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third, put your phone down. You are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading consent calendar.
I remove, we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman twenty-third. We have a second from the Alderwoman from the sixth. Any discussion? All right, we may proceed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aide.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aide.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans? Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Page? Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aide.
Alderman Kotar?
Aide.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aide.
Alderman Gunther?
Aide.
Alderman Bommer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappi?
Aide.
Alderman Stevens?
Aide.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aide.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderman Odenberg?
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aide.
Alderman Todd? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Keys?
Aide.
Alderwoman Walker? Alderman Vicaro?
Aide.
Alderman Orion?
Aide.
Alderman Cone? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aide.
Alderman Gross? President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans? Alderman Page? Alderman Cone? Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderman from the twenty-third to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Board Bill Number 137, Committee Sub as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, and Alderwoman Rice. An ordinance to provide for independent investigations of law enforcement misconduct and use of force incidents and repealing ordinance number 71556, and enacting in lieu thereof of a new ordinance that reconstitutes and provides staff support for the civilian oversight board, and provides coordination and staff support for the detention facility oversight board, created under ordinance number 71430, and establishing the Division of Civil Rights Oversight within the Department of Public Safety, and authorizing the establishment of Public Integrity Unit, directed by the Circuit Attorney in the city of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 137, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 137, Committee Sub as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 137, Committee Substitute as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Everybody is familiar with the importance of this bill, as we have continued a conversation about Black History and being Black History Month down here. It's interesting to me some of the things that continue to go on, and some of the, what I like to call, creative confusion that continues to go on. So you can go back, you heard me say I'm a nerd. I watched these videos twenty-something years back, ten-something years back. Go back, watch the hearings about civilian oversight in the city of St. Louis. Look up the bills about civilian oversight in the city of St. Louis, and see how people voted. See- See how people spoke in the committees. See how they carried legislation. How important this is to the civilians, the people that we are called and elected down here to represent. The people that I hear from all the time. Last week, a comment was made about not bringing certain people to the table. And I want to speak to that today because there were people out of those organizations that did come to the table. And they have been calling on this kind of legislation and this kind of voice for our people for a long time. But out of respect, I didn't talk about them much during the hearings. I just talked about community voices. But there are people, good people, every day that do this job that feel like this is what is needed to build the community, the transparency, the advocacy, and the accountability back in policing. We have an incomparable team set up for civilian oversight here in the city of St. Louis. And for the first time since this fight began, we do not have civilian oversight in the city of St. Louis. After all the work that our elders and our people and people down here at this board fought for, I wonder what has changed? I really wonder what has changed because the need for it hasn't changed. The instances haven't changed. And this morning, when I was working with people and serving with people at the Hardee's Rise and Shine thing, I talked to people that said, hey, I saw the work that you're doing, and this is not against police. And we know the need, and we know the advocacy piece of that. But we also know where those narratives come from and what the intention is those is to continue division. So if we ever want to get past this, I'm asking my colleagues to vote your own hearts and your own minds for your own constituencies and reinstate civilian oversight here in the city of St. Louis today.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 137, Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Bommer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. I'm sorry, was that a no? I'm sorry, was that a no, Alderman Odenberg? Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Bommer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Cohn. Twenty-one aye votes. Twenty, I'm sorry, nineteen aye votes, two no votes, one abstain, and two present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 137, Committee Substitute as amended.
Board Bill Number 183, Committee Sub as amended. President, introduced by President Green and Alderman Cohn. The proposed bill amend and revises ordinance Number 62885, which imposes a one-half and a half of one percent sales tax, known as the capital improvements sales tax, on all retail sales made in the city of St. Louis, which are subject to taxation under the provisions of Sections 144.010 to 144.525 revised state Missouri. And provides for the allocation of such funds for the purpose of funding capital improvements, including allocations for ward capital improvements. So the allocations for the ward capital improvements for each ward shall be made equally.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 183, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and finally pass Board Bill 183, Committee Substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the sixteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 183, Committee Substitute as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, I renew my motion.
Discussion, seeing none. It's been moved by the Alderman from the sixteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 183, Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Bommer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Walker? Alderman Cohn. Twenty aye votes, four no, one present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion for the Alderman from the sixteenth to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 183, Committee Substitute as amended.
Board Bill Number 130, introduced by Alderman Kotar, Alderman Stevens, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service Authorizing and Directing a supplemental appropriation in the total amount of thirty million dollars into the annual city budget established by ordinance Number 71505, approved June 30, 2022, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, for deposit into the project fund defined below of the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation Lease Hold Revenue Bonds, Series 2020, for continuing improvements to the Chavantis Convention Centers owned by the City of St. Louis, Missouri, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the seventh, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 130.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and final pass Board Bill 130.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 130. Any discussion? Alderman from the ninth.
I believe that I was asked to be a co-sponsor during committee on this one, so just correct it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 130.
Request previous roll? Did everyone vote for the last thing?
Hearing no objection to previous objection. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Bommer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Cohn. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the seventh to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 130.
Board Bill Number 64, Committee Sub as amended, introduced by Alderman Cohn, President Green, Alderman Gunther, and Alderman Stevens, I'm sorry, and Alderman Orion. An ordinance approving policies and procedures in connection with the consideration of development proposals and containing a servability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number 64, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 64, Committee Substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the twelfth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 64, Committee Substitute as amended. Alderman from the ninth, you may proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the twelfth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 64, Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objections, motion passes.
Board Bill Number 120 as amended, introduced by Alderman Bosley and Alderwoman Peel. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2022, published license number 117-2, March 11, 2022, ARPA, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expend the funds to the extent received, containing a servability clause and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the third, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 120 as amended.
Thank you. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 120 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we third read and final pass Board Bill 120 as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
All right, once again, Board Bill 120 is an appropriation of ARPA funds for our infrastructure needs. And if anybody has any questions or comments, we'll take them. All right, with that, I renew my motion.
No further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman from the sixth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 120 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Bommer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderman Cohn. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the third to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 120 as amended.
Board Bill Number 55, introduced by Alderman Odenberg. The bill will amend City of St. Louis Revised Code Chapters 4.18.055, 4.19.140, and 4.19.70, to permit the Fireman's Retirement System Board of Trustees to also act as the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Board Plan of Trustees. The provisions of this bill would not become effective until such time as amendments to Missouri revised statutes 87.140, 87.145, 87.155, 87.260, and 87.350 have become law to permit the Fireman's Retirement System Board of Trustees to also act as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters, I'm sorry, Firefighters Retirement Plan.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you are recognized on Board Bill Number 55.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. At the request of a sponsor, we're going to put this back on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Report of engrossments, Board Bill Number 189, Board Bill Number 162, Board Bill Number 132, Board Bill Number 143, Board Bill Number 158, Board Bill Number 166, Board Bill Number 171, Board Bill Number 187, Board Bill Number 137, Committee Sub as amended, Board Bill 183, Committee Sub as amended, Board Bill Number 130, Board Bill Number 64, Committee Sub as amended, and Board Bill 120 as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar. Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
Yeah, there we go. I move that we, uh, adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Any discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move that we make Resolution one eighty-seven in bank, please.
Uh, it's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we make, uh, Resolution number one eighty-seven in bank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. First reading resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading of resolutions, Committee reports and adoptions.
Resolution number one seventy-one, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green and Ingr- I'm sorry, Alderwoman Ingracia, Responsibility Leveraging of Settlement Funds.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you are recognized on the second reading and adoption of Resolution number one seventy-one.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we second read and adopt Resolution one seventy-one.
Uh, it's been moved by the Alderman, or Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we adopt Resolution one seventy-one. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
I just note that in committee, I think we had a lot of good discussion about, um, some ideas that we would offer, right, to the new fourteen about, um, leveraging these funds. And then I got calls afterwards and even before about this community engagement process and how people want this, right? They want to be able to be involved in how we'll leverage and use spend and invest and make decisions about, um, this landmark, um, settlement fund. So, um, I think that we came up with some good ideas in committee about having some specific town halls around even our own. And when I say our own, I'm talking about our employees, city employees, having specific town halls around our seniors and making sure that they are engaged and reached out to in different ways. Meeting people where they are up until when they reach out to us in different ways, like, I, I'll just briefly say, um, everybody knows Queen Tomasina in our communities, and she said, why don't we look at some street common measures with this money that hasn't been looked at and our other things, building up on what we started with the ARPA funds with this, again, landmark settlement money. So I'm excited and encouraged about this. There's been a lot of good feedback about making sure that the community is involved in this process, which is something that our mayor has proud of herself on. So I thank you again for the hearing, for Alderman Oldenburg, for calling the hearing and us having good conversation around the good ideas to start, to gear up, to tee up the next fourteen in this process.
Thank you. Alderman from the ninth.
Madam President, I just asked that we put Resolution one seventy-one in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, that we, uh, make Resolution one seventy-one in bank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also want to thank the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, uh, for bringing this. The committee discussion was great. Um, just highlighting, uh, that there, we can, we can have town halls, we can have discussions and suggestions about this money on all sorts of different topics. Um, I want to highlight, there's a lot of sort of structural capital that's in the resolution. And I just want to encourage the next board, whoever's down here, um, and the President's office and the mayor's office, I mean, considering the human capital, um, aspect of this as well. So whether that's early childhood education, um, other types of anti-poverty measures, um, youth programming, things like, or, or even the, um, raises for city employees, you know, we talked about that. Um, and I know that Alderwoman just mentioned that, Alderwoman from the thirteenth, mentioned in committee as well. There's, uh, it, this kind of transformative amount of money that we're investing smartly right now, um, can be, can be such a benefit to the city going forward. And so, um, thank you for bringing this and setting the tone of collaborative community involvement as we move forward. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any fir- Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
That just made me think. I needed to bring up the fact that I thanked Alderman Oldenburg for calling the hearing, but I should, I should also thank Alderwoman Switzer for leading, for chairing the hearing, which was her first chairing the hearing by herself. So, thank you.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Oh, thank you so much. I did sit in and listen to that committee hearing. Not on the committee. One of the things that, uh, I was impressed with was the additional ideas that came out. Because yes, you're an elected official, yes, you're an alderperson, but at the end of the day, you work for the people. And if you're not going to listen to them, and if you're not going to empower them and educate them, there's no purpose to any of this. Also, don't go and get people in that position of, oh, woe is me, I am poor, I'm going to stay poor, when you don't have resources to take care of them. Ongoing, stable resources, not a one-time pot. So, as the new board sits, I hope someone educates them on Economics one-on-one and what that means. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you're recognized, close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we second, uh, read and finally adopt Resolution number one seventy-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, Committee, uh, for Long-Term Healthcare Special Committee will meet at three P M via webinar. And Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, Transition to Fourteen Wards Committee will meet at eleven A M via webinar.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the eighth.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, we'll be holding an Education and Youth Matters Committee meeting on February twenty-second at eleven A M. Uh, we're hearing from the St. Louis Research Collaborative that's working with S L P S on student mobility. They have a presentation they'd like to discuss with us, um, and so we'll, we'll be hearing from that. Anybody is welcome to join us. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth.
Tess, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As senior member of the board, I will announce that, uh, following this meeting, my office will be open for beverage consultation. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's a big weekend in Soulard. We've got the, uh, Taste of Soulard and the Purina Pet Parade on Sunday. So come on down. Weather's going to be great. Uh, beer will be flown and there'll be lots of food available. Thanks.
Further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
I'd like to excuse the Alderman of twenty-fifth for necessary absence. Everybody else was here.
It's been moved, moved by the Aldermen from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we excuse the alderperson from the twenty-fifth for necessary absence.
Yeah, I was going to-
Believe he's, as in necessary absence, I, I-
We will make note of that in the record. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Still saying motion carries. The ayes, you got to get louder. Um, Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
First we got to do it. I, I, I should, I should have adjourned, I should have motioned that, uh, Greg couldn't make the meeting, but anyway. I mean, he's, he's sick. I don't know what's going on. Anyway, I move that we adjourn until April the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, which is a sign and aye.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by the Alderman from the tenth, that we adjourn until April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We are adjourn-